All right. It's my favorite point of meeting right here. All right, please join me, cold order, 5:50. And please join us for the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Constitution, the Constitution of this world, and to the justice of our all. Thank you. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, this public body, the HOPACON Board of Education hereby announces that the New Jersey Herald and the Daily Record have been notified by email that this Board of Education retreat meeting take place at 5:30, now 5:51 PM on April 29, 2022. Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Falcione Schuber?
President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I believe the opening statement is defective in that it does not list the place of the meeting.
Okay. "In the gym of HOPACON High School." It's being added to the end of the statement. Thank you, Jerry. Jeff?
Mr. Jerry? Ms. Falcione Schuber?
President.
Ms. Guwan?
Here.
Ms. Turkington?
Here.
Mr. Grunfelder?
Here.
Mr. DiStefano?
Uh, here.
Ms. Paula Chana?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we're gonna start opening up with public comment. And I apologize to anyone if I don't read your name correctly, but this looks like John Isit Click. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to thank the board for...
Oh, John, I'm sorry, I gotta thank one mislabeled here. By board policy, everyone will have three minutes. One in the beginning, and then three at the end. I would want to point out, we're here for a discussion of open public comment, not a question and answer, so we're not gonna do a lot of active work. And, you know, obviously, questions, positive, constructive, and similar. John, I'll let you go.
Okay, well, I'd like to, first of all, I mean, it's like, there are no...
...has to indicate that we're accepting public comments right after the opening statement.
Yeah, I've amended it here on mine, so Jeff, please amend it for the public comment. Okay. Yeah, they are opening statements. They are opening statements.
He did.
He did. And I added "HOPACON High School gym" to the end. John, I'm sorry, I can get it right now.
Surely. I'd just like to clarify something that you just said, so there will be no opportunity to ask any question or inquire about particular information.
You can ask right now. What I'm trying to say, we know, is one-on-one debate, right? Do you know what it is?
No, I don't intend for debate, I just have an inquiry about if the board, as a group, and/or the superintendent or the teachers, had any problem with the state recommended or the federal recommended curriculum, either because they've considered that nonproductive or maybe even harmful to the student. Is there any protocol that they have to go back up the chain, so to speak, to the state and/or the federal, to make an objection and sort of go back and forth with that?
Okay, we're gonna try to do this as smooth as we can. We'll take all the questions, Joe's gonna type it down, and we'll hit it, we'll hit it. Okay, thank you, John. Cheryl Crunk? Cronk?
Crunk. Hi, thank you for being here tonight. I spoke briefly Monday, and I went back and did some more research, and what the state put out was guidelines based on federal guidelines for the comprehensive health and physical education, which means that the teachers have to then write the curriculum, which have to be approved by the board, I believe. A lot of these things, I think it's too much information, too much detail, there's a lot of good things in this, but there's a lot, several things that really should be amended. I'm not gonna go through them right now, I don't think it's necessary if you've been following, but I wanted to ask if I was correct, that this curriculum that now has to be developed by the teachers, does that have to be approved by the board before it is used? I believe it does. And then the second question was, will this specific curriculum be available for parents to review online or wherever, but really in detail? Because some of these resource materials are so inappropriate, it's really startling and appalling, and people have to be given the option to consider whether to opt out or not, which is actually too bad, because like I said, there are a lot of good things. If you could just take out the bad things, or that stuff that's just too much information too soon kind of stuff, the rest of it would be great, it's even needed. And I do want to thank the teachers for spending all this extra time that they're gonna have to spend putting this together, it's really a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Tom Frill?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Being who I am, always start with a prayer, and I say, "Lord, I hope and pray that modesty will be part of the agenda and curriculum that is developed as we sit here these days." I want to tell you a funny story. The story is this. In the 1850s and earlier, the schools in town were running by the town, they'd hire the teachers, whatever. There were private schools as well, but there were no public schools. And then it was decided, well, maybe it would be good to have public schools, and we can then say that all children should be educated, because there were parents that didn't believe that everybody should be educated, so that was a whole different topic. After that, they found out that the people would not vote for that. What did the people most need? Oh, the people wanted privacy for the boys and girls with separate privies to go to, those are outhouses, rather than share the common privy. So when the state decided that they would provide privacy for boys and girls, people said, "Let's have public schools." And then ball rolled on from there, in many good ways. I find it ironic that one of the things we're looking at this day is no longer ensuring the privacy of the boys and girls. I don't know how else to say it, but it's wrong. There are ways to accommodate the exceptions, but not make it so flagrante. And you know the details even better than I do. So the local boards are trusted this way. Local boards represent the state in educational duties and matters, as well as advocating for the concerns and rights of the local citizenry. So, board, I am saying to you, you obviously know what the state is telling you you gotta do. And we like that list, by the way. But in the areas where you have a choice of what needs to be done, we plead to listen to your citizenry and go the way it wants you to go. God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is Ronald Kelly.
I come here because I'm really concerned about what I've heard in the news and various articles about the critical race theory possibly implemented or already in place in a number of schools. And from what I've read about it, it's a great concern to me, and I would hope to the board and many people here that it really does not belong in the schools. I don't know if we have any power at this time to prevent it or overcome it, or if it's already implemented to reverse it, whatever the case may be. From what I've read, I've gotten many articles on this critical race theory, and it does implement the ideas of Marxism, and rather than bringing people together and admiring their abilities and background and so forth, it actually is a divisive curriculum, and it actually splits people. And it actually, it's a racist concept, rather than what they're claiming here is anti-racist. And I would hope that somehow, some way, and by the way, I do have a number of booklets on it, if any of you would like it, which shows that it actually began in Frankfurt, Germany, under Marx-Engel school of Marxism. And then, because they were afraid of people rejecting it, they changed the name of it. It was originally called Marx-Engel Concept or Principle, they changed it to a less, let's say volatile or threatening concept. And anyway, what I'm hoping is that if there's any way we can look at it more, study it more, and I will provide booklets for any of you who are interested in it, it does show the great damage it would do to students, to the country, to our schools, and I would hope that somehow, some way, we can prevent it, if it's not here already, or if it is here, to at least reverse it some way. Thank you.
All right. Frank Wimbush?
I truly believe everyone up there has the same agenda, and that's to make our schools better, much better. I truly believe you all have the same agenda, and that's your agenda. And the difference, I think, might be is how to get there, and that's what you guys need to work on and work together and work it out together, okay? Now, for me, not knowing the details and how the state decides if a HOPACON student needs, let's say, $100 per student, and a New York student needs $200 a student, because maybe they can't raise as much local tax revenue as we can, I don't know how that all works out. But I also know that the budget and all that, the money was already voted on, and that's now an old issue, so I get that too. So now, tonight, now, you must decide on a curriculum that will lead into higher test scores and make our schools desirable for families to choose a HOPACON over maybe Lenape or Morris Catholic, and that's your job up there, to try to make our schools better, and I think you're working hard at it. So I hope you do make good decisions today, and I hope you pick the three ARs over Murphy's gender lessons, especially for the younger people in our, in our school. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
Thank you. Thanks for having us. I just wanted to talk a little bit about what was discussed at our last meeting. We should have a microphone. So I wanted to first talk about the teacher, student/teacher ratio. I think it was 1 to 9.8. And so I did a little research, and I know, Mr. DiStefano, you had said not taking into consideration special ed, but there's a lot more than just special ed that I didn't think needs to be addressed. So at Durbin, there are four preschool teachers that only teach a very small group of people, so that's in the big count, that's skewing the numbers. At Tulsa, there's a teacher that's shared with high school. In the middle school, there's a teacher that has one class and then enrichment classes. So again, hitting just a very few number of students, as opposed to maybe 150 that some of the other teachers will hit. There's a teacher that has three classes, and typically it's five or six. Six teachers only have two classes at the middle school, one teacher is shared with the high school. At the high school, there's a teacher that only has one class. Teachers that only have, there's one teacher that has two classes, a teacher that has three. So you see my point, that it's not just special ed that has smaller classes, there's a lot of other teachers. So just quickly looking at it, it at least pops it up to 1 in 10.5, as opposed to 1.98, which is probably even higher than that, I just didn't have the time from Monday to today, doing my job to try to get all that figures. So I want that to be kept in mind, because when those figures go out and people are posting on it, they hear that number, and it's not really accurate. So we just need to keep that in mind. Also, I wasn't sure when the numbers were being looked at, it wasn't all certified or certificated employees that was divided by the number of students, because school counselors, CST members, our media specialists, and a few others don't teach classes, so if you're counting those employees as part of that number, that would exclude the numbers as well. The public posts lately have been talking about the low, that we should lower the number of administrators. I can tell you that we cannot afford to lose another administrator in our district. We, our high school, has one administrator. We have two other employees that are doing some of the administrative work, but they're not administrators. I do not think there's another school in Sussex County at the high school level with one administrator. Mrs. Martinez is doing an amazing job without having any other administrators, so when you say that out to the public, please be careful, because that's not feasible at this time. We have all taken on so many more responsibilities. Just because there's less students doesn't take the amount of work away that we have. The state has a lot of mandates that have not lessened just because we have less students, so you really need to be careful when you're saying that. We have a lot of new students coming from out of the country, which is wonderful, but again, very time-consuming, because we have to translate all the information. The state has put that on us to do, we cannot pay somebody to do that, it has to be done internally. We cannot put that burden on the people that are coming to us. Is my time up?
Yeah, we have no one here that will come back.
Okay, all right. All right, okay.
Sorry, I could listen to you all night, I promise. Rich? Schindler?
Rich Schindler, 269 Lakeside Boulevard. So I guess a meeting ago, or two meetings ago, Alex had some real good facts, and I think even Phil might have said some facts last meeting or whatever, real facts on the state and the state funding. And this is more for the strategic planning end of the meeting, okay? So when you guys are talking about the long-term strategic planning and goals, I hope you're gonna take that information, that is basically facts, and how it's gonna affect our school, your budget, and where we go with it. Because one of the concerns I have is, and I know you just passed a 4% budget, done. The issue really at hand is next year, you're looking at another big cut from the state, but the reason why they're cutting you is really your enrollment is down. And to a comment that was just made about the teachers still have the same amount of work, even though there are less kids in the room, maybe not, you know, in any business, you have to look at functionality and what people are doing for the given workload. And maybe we need to increase some of the class sizes, like Phil was mentioning. The other point is that when you guys are discussing the long-term planning, don't forget, I might be wrong, but I think the union contract's up next year. And I'll tell you, inflation's hitting, and man, they're gonna be hitting. Just a reminder, they're in the 10% being paid in the state, so be cognizant of that, and you got a real challenge coming, so.
Thanks, Rich. Jono?
Hi, guys, I'm back. I just wanted to make a comment about your budget process. You finally woke up. Okay, all the years of the zero increase just killed us. And if you look at the data, what you could buy for $10 in 2015, today costs $12.30. That's a 23% increase without doing anything else. There was one year where the board actually went negative 5%, so now that's a 28% deficit all these years. Now, last year, you did a 2%, so in reality, just to keep ahead with today's prices, you need 26% more money than you have, and you don't get it. So to base your future planning on the fact that you never want to raise taxes is a dream. It's not gonna happen. Yes, you need to find out where you can be more economically useful with different things. Maybe you have to go big class sizes, maybe you have to, hate to say it, farm out certain things you do in the school district that are not educational, maybe an outside contract that can do it. I didn't know the answer, but be very careful when you have people come in and tell you how to run your business. I lived through that mess when I worked at Nabisco. Every two years, somebody come in and say, "We can cut 10%," right? But the things they wanted us to do, half of them were illegal, the other half would hurt production, so maybe 10% of what they said we could do. So for 10%, we get 1%. And then we pay them like big bucks. We actually, somebody came in one time, we spent a million dollars to have a consultant make a chart that says as advertising goes up, sales go up, as advertising goes down, sales go down. What? Watch out for the experts. I mean, the last three, couple of reports we had, back in 17, I guess it was, there were a ton of mistakes in the data. I don't ever, I don't think we ever got the revised report back, all right? But you can't focus on the tax rate, you have to focus on the children, what's best for the children, and where you can cut meaningfully, not whole hell slaughter. And I'll say something later, after I hear what you guys are talking about.
Frank Bridges, 69 Elba Avenue. Good evening, board, board members, Dr. Picarello, board president Scott Francis, and residents of HOPACON. I have three things I just want to mention real quick, and then I want to talk at the end, too. I wanted the board to seriously consider moving the time, starting time back to the way it was for everybody here, for availability and accessibility. The 5:30 to 7:00 is really difficult, you know, on the residents and stuff like that, so maybe we can make a compromise, you know, maybe 6:30 or something that works for you, and better, you know, something better for the accessibility for the residents, so they can, you know, be part of the board and be part of the discussion. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is with regard to the budget, I know the budget's done. I went online and I looked at the user-friendly budget, but I think you owe the residents something a little bit more in terms of a budget presentation, like we did in the past. I mean, you don't have to go into all the details. I would even volunteer to help prepare that, if you want, you know, I work with Jeff Hallenbach to do something like that, but it's not only where the money is spent or how the money is spent, but it's an opportunity for people to see what's going on in the district. And, you know, I think you should, you know, seriously consider doing something for the residents of this town. The other thing I wanted to mention, I have some ideas with regard to raising money. One of the things that I thought about is maybe we should come up with a committee with board members and people in the public to come up with ideas, but I had a whole list of ideas here, and I just wanted to mention before you guys start talking about, you know, raising funds, and one of the things is, I thought about is corporate sponsor, corporate sponsorship, you know, there's companies that would be willing to, really willing to help out or maybe sponsor, whether in town or out of town, you know, they're looking to, you know, especially now with ESG, if you guys know a little bit about ESG, companies are more looking into, they're required to do, environment, social, and governance. So along those lines, they're looking to be part, more part of the community. So, you know, there's companies in Mount Olive, there's companies in Dover, there's companies in Roxbury, that, you know, maybe we should reach out to, see if they want to, you know, sponsor us and sponsor the district. The other thing I had is, the other idea I had is alumni association. Our 50-year class reunion is coming up this year, and as years go on, you know, you're gonna have more and more reunions. So that would be a good opportunity for, you know, appealing to, you know, past classmates who, you know, want to give back to the, you know, to the high school instead of giving back to colleges. Colleges have endowment funds and billions of dollars, high schools don't, you know, I think we could do a better job with, you know, alumni association and raising funds along those lines. Renting the facilities, I know you do that, you know, maybe we could promote that a little bit more, renting the highest, you know, rooms in high school and stuff. And do we have anything along the lines of Amazon contributions, you know, people buying goods and services on Amazon, and like 5% or 10% of the purchases can go, you can designate to the high school, I know other organizations do that? I talked to Dr. Picarello along the lines of maybe extending enrollment to students in foreign countries or, you know, other, even other states, I don't know, you know, we have to think out of the box, and maybe if we can get enrollment out that way, I know Mount Olive had recently went to China and brought in over 100 kids from China in the Mount Olive School District, and, you know, there was an amount of money charged to them for tuition, and then they stayed with host families, too, and the host families got money, you know, to board them and reboard them, too. I was thinking, too, along the lines of, you know, maybe we can do some technology classes, something virtual, and, you know, charge people. We're done, okay. Two other quick things, grants, I know there's a lot of grant money out there, and I know schools are always competing on grants, and FEMA grants, there's a lot of money out there for FEMA grants for improvements, for capital improvements for the school district. That was it.
Brian Thompson? Oh, okay. James?
I just wanted to add a little more information about what I spoke about on Monday night, the preschool that is potentially moving into Tulsa Trail School. Picking up where I left off on Monday night, well, a little background in case you didn't hear, there's a potentially private company, paid for with grant money from the state, that will be given several classrooms in Tulsa Trail space, classrooms that currently belong to teachers that work here, that students, our children, your children, use these classrooms. Classrooms will be going to, oh, I'm over here, classrooms will be going to a private company to run their preschool. And our teachers, children who currently use the classrooms would be moved out into other classrooms, classrooms will be renovated, and seemingly available for use in September by the private company. Now, what I was starting to get at on Monday night was, number one, comes in to the district and leaves the district, in from my right hand and out to my left hand, because that money goes towards paying for students to attend preschool. This is a good thing, by the way, if someone says, "Well, how is that bad?" It's not bad. These are 3- and 4-year-olds in our community. I think Brian said that something like, "These are not our kids." They are our kids. There are 3- and 4-year-olds that are HOPACON children. So it's in our best interest to educate them, to provide a quality education, so that they're prepared when they enter school. so that they're prepared when they enter school. So that we don't have to have as many remedial classes, etc. It's also in the best interest of our town, and I've shared this with Mayor Francis. That would be a good precedent to start, but it's in the best interest of our economy, our local economy, because it allows parents to get back to work. This is a good thing. Now, that money coming in and out, grant money, that money is going to a private company because they're the ones doing the preschool education. They have some options here. Right now, they're in their centers in, like First Impressions, for instance, is at First Impressions and we're paying their bill. Right? Not taxpayer, the grant money. If they move to a location on our campus next year, remember their three rooms are empty. What we could do is charge them rent for those three empty rooms. Now remember, I'm paying them anyway. They're paying rent to the person there they sit around. Wouldn't it be nice if I hold the money in here, give it to them here, and then they pay me the rent back? And then I get some money out of this deal. Remember, three rooms empty. Our students. Now, Brian will say that some teachers are being moved into Tulsa. Well, that's true. Imagine, I want to sequester these preschoolers in one space where they have access to a restroom. I have young children, they need access to a restroom. They are sequestered here. That's not where the storage room is. That's not where these two empty homerooms are. So I'm going to move those three empty rooms to the same central location. That means that a person that has a room here might have to move here. But they're still in that building. And I found a way for us to bring in income, which I think you would like that from. So anyway, this is not a done deal. If that's not what the Board wants to do, we don't do that. However, that is what is being talked about. Now Patty talked about, is Tulsa being closed? That's not what we're talking about for next year. We're talking about the renting. Now, in future years, we talk about everything. That includes Tulsa, that includes reconfiguration. Look, we're in a budget crunch, folks, you know this. So in the effort to explore all possibilities, do we talk about closing schools? Yeah, we'll talk about it today. We'll talk about it, we'll talk about reconfiguration. Because it would be a disservice to our roles to not explore those possibilities. That's simply the fact. And if the roof, which you pointed out, needs to be done and might cost a million dollars to do, it's in our interest and yours for us to determine, is Tulsa in the cards long-term as a facility? Because if it is, we must invest in it. And if it's not, we must invest in a way that will get us towards whatever our end time might be. And I think you would all appreciate and understand that. There's been no conversation about custodians though, Patty. I know that had been done way before I came on the Board. We'd never talked about that since. So that was my quick rundown. It went longer than I had hoped, but I do appreciate your being here. Hey, can we go?
Yeah.
I want this guy to be able to.
Alright, thank you, Joe. We're talking about some light topic, music. Thank you for the introduction. Really my pleasure, my honor to be here. Ely Prep is a private boarding and day school for first grade through 12th grade. And we concentrate music, music is our heart and soul. And so we take kids from really young age and based on their interest, their talent level, their preference, we assign them a major instrument to study. So on top of the general, general study, science, English, math, all the fun stuff, we offer a very comprehensive music curriculum like ear training, music theory, music history. Ensemble is one of our focus. We want the kids not only be able to master the instrument, we want them to really have fun. So we have ensembles from traditional piano trio, string quartet, to rock band, jazz band, all the fun stuff. So we are so glad and thank you, Joe, for the Board opened the door for us so we bring music to this town. So we talked about this idea of building a string orchestra for Hopaccon schools. I think it was last year and finally it happened in this March. All the instruments arrived and we, today I'm officially donating to the schools, I think it's about $30,000 for string instruments, a concert of cello. And more importantly, we already have kids sign up. We have about 35 kids sign up and we started the program back in March. And the kids are really, really wonderful. I, we, they're very attentive, they listen, they really want to be there. And they treasure this opportunity, you know. Yesterday I was in a classroom, I told the class, I said, "Hey, there might be a chance we finally work this out, you can take the instrument home to practice." And after the class, there's one child came to me, he said, you know, very serious tone, "Mr. Y, I thank you for providing us the instrument." So it warmed my heart, you know, and it's all really, really worth it. So again, if I may, I'd like to show one of the instruments. This is one of the cellos. Let's see. So because the kids, they are all in different size, different age groups, so we brought instruments like this from different sizes as well. So we have like a quarter size for the fourth grader or younger kids. And we have up to half size, three-quarter size, a full size. And that's, that's the first step. You know, we have cellos, we have about 10 cellos like this. And we're going to have, we also have a violin from different sizes as well. So it's very cute. You have a, the little guys have the little violin and the big guys have the full size, you know. And again, it's really, really good to see the kids have hands on the instrument and already start playing open string, you know, they just really love it. And hopefully this is just a beginning of a great relationship with the schools, with this beautiful town. And hopefully you'll hear the kids play very soon. Alright? And as an Ely Prep Academy, we really want to be in this town. And come to support us. We are going through the Land of Youth Board Meeting Hearing and get a final approval. So this is going to be May 17. And if you can join us, come to support us, really, really appreciate it. And again, thank you for the opportunity and I believe this is the beginning of a beautiful relationship we started and hopefully there'll be more. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are really, I was a musician in a former life. These are really quality instruments, I have to say. When we first talked about what, you know, yeah, instruments, I thought, "That's really nice, that's amazing, we're getting instruments." But then when they came, I said, "Ooh, these are instruments." So thank you so much and thanks for donating your time also with the lessons. It's great for our kids, thank you.
Great kids and a positive year, thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to think of a clever way to do this where I cannot have you guys really talking back and forth. So I guess the easy childish way to do it is raise your hand and I'll try to do the best I can. And then at the end, when you're done, say Scott, like just say my name and I'll go to the next person. Yeah, that would be great so I can see. Bend them around the sides or something. Alright, that's better. I can work.
I just wonder how well you can play the bass.
Alright, so we're going to do, we're going to do one topic at a time, right? We're going to go down the letters and we'll make this work. Alright, so. Alright, cool. So we're under the banner of Public Relations Op-Ed, you know, floor is open. We can do this, you know, just.
Yeah, so Scott, if you want, I can read what we got so far. So we had been in discussions about having an op-ed that we would send out to local papers to discuss sort of our feelings around the budget beyond this year, but sort of just the state aid cuts. So this is what we have so far and this is what we're discussing. This is a draft. "To whom it may concern, as members of the Hopaccon Borough School District's Board of Education, we must voice our concerns with the hope that this letter will reach the eyes of someone in a position to help. We are currently working on a budget that will be the year four of a six-year period of state aid cuts from the NJ DOE, wherein our district will ultimately lose 90% of its state funding, over $8.4 million. This coming year alone, we will see a reduction of nearly $2 million, while Governor Murphy boasts the inclusion of over $660 million in additional funding for schools throughout the state. Over the past three years of budget cuts, our district has made many difficult reductions while generating income through out-of-the-box thinking. We eliminated multiple administrative positions, consolidated our district from five buildings to four by selling an elementary school, sold a permanent easement of a cell tower, automated processes throughout the district to improve efficiency, opted into new insurance plan for our staff members to cut costs, and participated in new grant initiatives and shared service ventures to reduce costs in areas ranging from maintenance to electrical usage. Entering year four, we have trimmed district spending and are proud of the work we have been able to do. Considering that we've had a 45% decline in enrollment from the height, or height a decade ago, the concept of losing state aid would be understandable if it were a comparable cut. After our initial cuts these past few years, we are now unfortunately beginning to scrape at the bone. As we look ahead to this coming school year, considering our collective bargaining agreements that impact about 80% of our budget and the historic rate of inflation that impacts nearly every aspect of our expenses in areas ranging from food to fuel, we would need to raise taxes on our community by nearly 12% just to keep our district at a level of status quo. As it is, we are only able to raise taxes up to a level of bank cap, which would be a 6% increase. Some might suggest to raise the taxes to 6% to combat the state aid cuts and increase costs, but unfortunately it's not that simple. Our taxpayers are also struggling to stay afloat, given the rising inflation in fuel prices. We simply can't continue to pass the burden on to the taxpayers when the real problem is the state has gone too far with state aid reductions. Having previously met with members of the New Jersey Department of Education and various elected officials, we feel it's appropriate to now take our frustrations public. We want our schools to be the very best because our students and our taxpayers deserve it. We cannot raise taxes 6% because many members of our community will not be able to afford it. We cannot afford, we cannot not afford to raise taxes because our schools will not survive. If we compromise to a 4% tax increase, we will still need to cut 10 positions leading to the loss of academic programs and increase of class size. In the coming years, we will need to cut veteran tenured staff members with nearly 20 years of experience in our district. We are concerned that in year five and year six, these cuts will no longer be able to provide our legal obligation of a thorough and efficient education. We are open to suggestions, we are open to partnerships, we are open to any grants, we are open to any of the out-of-the-box thinking, but bottom line is, we need help. And we request that the NJ DOE stop the state aid cuts to the Hopaccon Borough Schools immediately. If this is not possible, we ask that the reductions phase out over a longer period of time, allowing us to reach a more sustainable solution rather than being forced into mass layoffs. We believe in investing in our district to provide a comprehensive education, especially now considering the impact COVID had had on our community. We need support to serve our students.
Anybody?
I think that's my favorite part about that. It's true and it says everything that everybody in this room truly must believe. I don't know how anybody couldn't. We all believe that and I think that's spot on for the decisions we're trying to make. And I think that we couldn't ask for anything better to go out to the public for everybody. And I hope everybody supports that because I think it's really, really important to get that word out. So thank you, I think that's so important.
Yeah, can I say something?
Yep.
As far as I'm concerned, this evening and during last Monday evening's meeting, there was really a good turnout of parents, residents, and taxpayers to these meetings. These are not Board of Education meetings. They belong to you. And I will tell you, although you'll not like to hear it, that in my opinion, part of the reason why we find ourselves in some of these situations is the fact that when we do come up against an issue or a problem that's going to affect everybody, no one comes to the meeting. That's like experimenting with a driverless school bus. It jeopardizes what can happen here. I don't consider myself to be an elected public official. I consider myself to be an elected public servant. But if I don't know what the public expects and what the public anticipates, very difficult to read minds. I would hope that all of you continue to make an effort and invite people to come to these meetings. I understand that there have been some Facebook posts about misinformation. I believe that if you come to a meeting such as this and you pay attention and you take notes, there won't be as much misinformation out there and you will have the opportunity, not the opportunity, you will then have the responsibility to interact with your elected representatives so they know what it is you feel is best, both for the district and for your children. So I'm thrilled, thrilled that you are all here tonight and I hope the next meeting, we have double the number of people that we have here tonight. I would like to say something about the sex ed curriculum.
Wait, Jerry, we're going to call down the line.
Talking about the letter, Public Relations Letter?
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just want to try to keep this.
You make me apologize, you know that. You call me after these meetings and you do?
And to Jerry's point, when he was on the Board, he did go to a lot of meetings, almost everyone.
Okay, let's, anyone else on the letter?
I would just like to say I'm in agreement with the letter. I think it clearly lays everything out. It lists a lot of things that we've done. And it appeals to the state that we are in, which is in frustration. And I hope that someone answers it.
So that's a discussion point, that's a good discussion point. So the question was, for anyone that didn't hear it, who are we going to send it to? I believe, you know, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. Originally, the intent of the letter was to send it to Governor Murphy, right? And I think what it's evolved into now is potentially finding a place to publish it as well as maybe sending it to Governor Murphy. But that would be something that I'd want to hear input from, from all of you and then eventually maybe, you know, definitely even publicize.
And this would be, this would be an opportunity where what Jerry and I have said about Facebook rumors, this is where we would love for you to spread stuff on Facebook. This letter, share it out to your friends.
In my opinion, again, knowing how politicians react, they react to votes. They don't really react to letters. But if we were to take that letter, which in my opinion has in my opinion has been very well-written, and we were to expand it into a petition with signatures attached, I believe it would then begin to carry a lot more weight than just simply the letter. I wish that were not the case, but politicians frankly would care less about letters. What they care most about are votes. So if they see parents, teachers, residents, taxpayers, those signatures are on that letter, now they know that there is some power behind this movement and they're more likely to respond in a manner that we would prefer.
Great point. And Joe quietly expanded upon the petition idea with maybe even a digital petition to make it easier to collect signatures and that's another good idea. So that's, that's great stuff.
I also think we should reach out to like the Suffolk County Representative Board, especially for my own personal experience. I had issued my maternity leave, so I had, I thought, I was like, let me go right through the Senate. And they're like, no, 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 you're gonna start with your Suffolk County Representative. So if we could, you know, use the people that we've already voted into to represent our county, that might bring more light to the governor. And if they feel like they can't answer our question, that's when they would have to reach out to the Senate. Because I had spoken to Cory Booker a long time ago and he was like, if the county can't help me, then they'll, then they would address the issue. So if they can't help us, then it's the bigger door.
Yeah. So what I've written down so far, I just wanna keep us, how to deliver the letter with a petition, perhaps a digital petition, how do we, starting with local, then to county, then to state, how far, how far we wanna take it.
They're just trying to, and it was TC, everybody at the bottom, TC, Suffolk County, TC, the Board of Education, or the state. TC, everybody across the board, all of our Senate, all of our local, in and across, everybody, everything for every county, the Democrats are having a problem, they can fight as well, and they can fight as well. If we've got other school districts having any problems, they start speaking up as well. You've got, like Jerry pointed out, you've got, you know, more numbers than we have, even if we're providing other counties, other states, it would be more helpful.
I don't know how far we can put, we can take this, but you know, even if we could have co-signers, and I love the idea of a petition because that has power, and if, I hope I'm not overstepping you, but having staff signing on to a petition and other superintendents in the county and going just, you know, line by line up the hierarchy. Yeah, it can, it can have some good.
Or the boards are signed.
Absolutely.
One side, and then every board sign that we give petition information. One other suggestion is that since we have a superintendent with an enviable musical background, perhaps we could turn it into a singing program.
Challenge accepted.
Insert joke here.
Give me a deadline.
All right. Anything else on the op-ed with the letter? And we'll take input from the public, you know, at the end, so.
I'd like to start with the next one if I can.
You're gonna start them all.
Regarding, regarding curriculum, so I think I, I think I explained the, the background on the curriculum. I hope that helps. So the context here, later on, there will be a resolution, and this is to approve curriculum, all the curriculum in total for the whole district, which is pro forma every year. This has nothing to do with, that wind chime is a little distracting for me, maybe not for everybody, but if you could just buzz it. Yeah, thanks a lot, Brian Collins. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But the, it is simply a pro forma. We do this every year. It has nothing to do with us specifically addressing critical race theory or gender identity. Now, I'm gonna add something. However, I've had many conversations with Mr. DiStefano. I respect Mr. DiStefano a lot. I think he knows this, it's probably not even important for the context of the conversation, but I know he knows this. We've had a really healthy back and forth because, I'll try not to speak for you, Phil, I know you're good at that yourself, but we've discussed differences in addressing this proactive because it's clearly a concern from the community. I know we haven't seen everything from the governor, but we are interested in doing something proactive that just shows, reflects your concerns and ours. Now, there are ways to do that. One idea that is my preference is to put a caveat statement that would go into all curriculum. Mr. DiStefano's preference would be to do a policy. In the end, we're kind of two sides of the same coin. It's kind of natural that curriculum, which I have more control over, I would opt to do that and I think I could do it immediately, just by approval tonight. Policy, which is what the board does, is the inclination of Mr. DiStefano, and that would take two months of readings. So I, I can see this being effectuated well either way, but I would like a chance for you to read your policy idea, me to read the curriculum statement, if that's okay with you, Phil? Okay. Why don't you read your policy first?
Well, it's, all right, so first off, the reason why I suggested policy change is that policy is pretty much like law, all right? That's what I mean, policy means law. And this allows us to ultimately potentially be even challenged by the state. So if the state comes up with a standard, as the superintendent explained before, which implies changes to the curriculum, if we have a policy that is in direct competition to that or right, competition with it, then we have, our lawyers can help us hash it out with the state itself. So it gives us an opportunity to really escalate the issue a little bit higher and a little bit faster. If you just make a change to the curriculum this year, it'll affect, you know, for the rest of, for the rest of next year until the standards are changed. If the standards are changed, then the superintendent will be forced to make a change to each of the curriculum. Each of the curriculum, I forget what the plural is.
Curriculum.
Curriculum, I think, I think, Jerry, I do know that answer. So by changing a policy or creating a policy, is my suggestion, we can really upstage the, any standards that come down, then we'll have an opportunity with our, with the law firm that we have to go back to the state and say, listen, we have this policy which contradicts standard. What do we do about it? Raise it up. Quite frankly, I don't care if it has to go to the Supreme Court because I think that's strongly about it. So I will read the suggestion. So now, I don't know if any of you saw it on Facebook, but I made changes to it based upon some of the input that I've gotten from some of the Facebook votes with the superintendent. So this is gonna be a new policy, it would be a 5,000-series policy which affects students. Sorry, affect students, right, 5,000, yeah. All right, so here it goes. Until the sixth grade, no curriculum will identify a sex as anything other than male or female. This includes textbooks, lesson plans, and illustrations of any kind in any medium. The concept of another sexual identity will not be taught. However, and this is where superintendent's buzzing my ear comes in, however, if a student brings up the topic, then the teacher may answer any direct question. Now, that is somewhat of a compromise to my original intent, but I think it's not an unreasonable request on part of the superintendent that that type of idea be brought into the, into the policy statement. Would anyone like me to read it again?
And I, I'd like to add just more, a little bit more context that originally, Phil, you don't, do you mind me saying what it was originally?
No.
Originally, it, the lines of the concept, "Concept of another sexual identity will not be taught or discussed." And I think that is sort of in line with, I don't know if Julia's still there, but, oh, okay, that's sort of in line with Julia because, because here's the, here's the truth of the matter. If a, if a student, remember, we educate all students, so if a student comes in with two moms, a student comes in with two dads, and there's, we could, any of you could disagree with that as an idea, but they're still, that's still true that they're coming in with two moms or two dads, right? And if they come to an event or it's brought up in class that they're gonna, Mother's Day, they're gonna give, they're gonna do two projects in Mother's Day to give to their two moms, that's gonna be stupid an issue. And so to say, we can't discuss this at all, I think would, one, be difficult and, two, could set us up for some interesting legal implications that, I don't have an attorney here right now, but what we can't do is discriminate. You know that, you know that. So I think that, just saying it won't be taught, I think that leaves it open for, if a student has a concern, that we're not gonna go, you know, oh, we can't talk about this, we can't talk about this in that way. But I do have another, I have the context that I would put in a curriculum, which I can read after we have this conversation.
I think they're two different things though, right? It's a sexual identity, I mean, gender is different than having two moms or two dads, right? So they're two different things.
They are two different things.
Okay, so does the policy address, the policy is only addressing gender?
Only addressing gender and won't be taught to children from K through the fifth grade.
Talking about sexual.
I'm not a cop.
Just read it again.
Just read it again. Read it again. Until the sixth grade, no curriculum will identify a sex as anything other than male or female. This includes textbooks, lesson plans, illustrations of any kind in any medium. Concept of another sexual identity will not be taught.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna keep us like, like somewhat, right? So this is specific to the teachings in the curriculum. There's outside of the scope of the teachings in the curriculum, there's going to be conversations about sexuality with students in a classroom that aren't coming directly from the curriculum. That's just a fact, that's part of life, right? There's, there's gonna be all kinds of scenarios where that.
Yeah, but, well, okay. All kinds of scenarios meaning.
Meaning, meaning, meaning the Mother's Day, meaning the Mother's Day, meaning a student has, is, or has a transgender sibling or a transgender.
Yeah, but I'm not talking any of those things.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
And that's what I wanna keep.
And that's like health class, you're talking about in health class.
No, you're talking about everything.
I want, it should really address all classes because, because quite frankly, you could bring in these issues into, into a math class, to be honest, it's actually possible. It's bizarre, but possible.
All right, Jackie?
So my, my honest question is, what grade do we even start having a health related? It sounds like.
No, it does, actually, it does happen early in the year.
I don't know.
Don't show, you know about the.
So at the fourth grade, they're having, they have it all.
But what Murphy was talking about, was K through three, some type of education.
At fourth grade, we have it all, right? We cover all of, whatever.
Like, I understand.
So, so he wants to move that to a lower, he wants to start those qualifications sooner?
Governor Murphy. That's what she was.
I don't wanna speculate too much about it because I don't know.
Right, so that's why I don't wanna get the part before the horse. You know, like you said, I understand the importance and the value of all sides, but I really, before we create a policy, I wanna see what we're being required or requested to do because I don't wanna say, I don't wanna put something in a place that we don't, might not even be valid or relevant at the time.
Jerry, Jerry's doing the hand thing, we gotta do the hand thing.
The thing that we need to do or we need to question before we try to create a policy, I think we need to, you're always a point, I know the facts, I know the facts.
Yeah, right, right. Jerry?
I'll respond to you, buddy.
Yeah, Jerry, go. Jerry, then, Phil.
I am, I am very serious about being in a position to represent you. You are my constituents. You put me in office and I have a moral responsibility to represent you. The issue that I have with the sex ed curriculum, this is my opinion now, is that I don't, I don't believe it belongs in the schools. I think it, I think it belongs within the family. And what I have seen over the past few years is the state government as well as the federal government imposing more and more restrictions, rules, mandates, and little by little, taking away whatever independence that we may have. So I've heard the suggestions about the sex ed curriculum and I can't say that I am vehemently opposed to them, except that my bottom line is that if you ask me right now, I would vote no about including any portion of the sex ed curriculum in the HOPACON Borough Schools.
Certainly, one of the reasons why I posted this on Facebook today was because I wanted your, I very much wanted it because, you know, for me, this is a belief, it's based upon my, you know, my personal values and my education and my experience. So, and, and that's not a completely way to come up with a rational decision-making concept. So that's why I need your opinion, that's why I asked for it and most people pretty much agree with the concept that sexual, sex education can really not be taught until the later years, until the children start, start to get into puberty and beyond. So that's how I, how I felt and for the most part, vast majority of the respondents that I got on Facebook was, was just that. There were some changes, there were some differences. What, one, one, one person, a teacher, well, well, how, how does a student address a non-binary teacher? And I was like, what was that all about? I mean, I know because of the work I've done on policy, I know what non-binary means, I think, okay, but, but certainly it was through a loop for me. So I had a chat with the superintendent and he made a great suggestion.
My first one or my second?
The second. His first one, well, he says, well, instead, you know, instead of, normally you address teachers, you know, Mr. Riley or Mrs. Riley, Mrs. Riley, or, or not, I don't even know what the new, well, way of saying that. And he suggested, well, they should get their doctorates.
I was joking.
He also came up with a better suggestion and said, well, the children really should address their teachers by the, by their, by their title. So he says they should be called professor, which is a great idea. So that's a different policy change that could potentially be made. I don't know if you, certainly would put that in curriculum. The bottom line again is, does this reflect at the community's values? I think it does. Should we do it in curriculum or should we do it as a policy? Superintendent wants to do it as curriculum, but I think it makes a stronger statement to do it in policy. Because next year, when the new standards come up, I think you said it's already, if I did it, I should shut up, but, then when the new standards come up, policies, sorry, the curriculum's going to change automatically and go back to, back to the same place. So a policy change will make it even a stronger statement. And it also, it's only one line you have to change instead of, I don't know how many curriculums there. I mean, I only examined the first six, six curriculums specifically for health and education. And quite honestly, they, they all are pretty much the same. There's one specific line that really addresses this area of concern and it's virtually, not virtually, it is identical in every one of those curriculums, first to sixth grades. So that gives a lot of latitude to whoever's teaching it. We don't get to see the lesson plans, so to me, the policy's the right way to do it. But Jackie, I know you're Jackie. I hear what you're saying, but it's really because I wanna get in front of it in this particular case. That's the reason why I'm suggesting we do a policy.
And I don't disagree with the need for a power thing. I don't disagree with the need for something.
All right, so you're.
I just wanna wait until we see what the requirements are. And I'm all for.
You wanna wait, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, you wanna wait until after we get the standards changed or standards divined by, by the, by the governor and the Board of Education?
I don't know what they're requiring on this yet. I don't want a policy.
The difference is, Phil's trying to get ahead of something that hasn't happened yet.
But what if, you can't get ahead of something if you don't know what the expectations are.
All right, Napoleon.
Okay. I just wanna, I just wanna wait. I just wanna be able to be sure.
Question for you, I want you to answer, so I'm kinda comparing. If we, is there a time of year when curriculum just comes out, like standards will come out? From the state, it could be anytime, it could be a year. If we do a policy, right, how long will it take to be made effective? Tonight would be the first reading, or no?
Oh, yeah, it could be. That's the point, it could be, if this was acceptable with any changes that you all wanted to consider.
And a first reading, it's just a first reading, we can go back and we can modify it.
That's correct, that's correct. So, if it held through the end of the month, the end of next month, then it would be approved the second month, so by the end of May would be an approved policy.
So, then, what I'm gonna suggest, after Joe reads Phil's, I think that we could do this right away, yours, right? Quit adding it to the curriculum.
I can do this today with board approval.
Right.
Well, it'll be approved with this resolution.
Okay, so, what I would like, if we like this word, and we do this tonight, it's all, it's in there, it's now, it's done. We also do a first reading of your policy, okay? And then, we have time to work on that policy. And this is, and then we have this as a moving part, and we have this as a safeguard. Close to little brown, the Q to T.
You get the best of both worlds.
Let's hear Joe's, let's hear Joe's.
And I'll read what I was, would, I would have preferred. I think you'll see, we're not really that different on this. So, this would go as a caveat statement, like a boilerplate into every one of our curriculums. So, "In the interpretation, implementation, and application of the curriculum, it is understood that each teacher will utilize their experience, expertise, and connoisseurship to properly address the standards and components listed. As a result, it is understood that lessons, projects, and conversations will not be uniform in all instances. However, it is important that educators reading this document understand and adhere to the fact that the goals of the existing health curriculum, as they pertain to concepts relating to LGBTQ+, are intended to promote tolerance and acceptance of all individuals regardless of difference. Every individual is unique, and the qualities, those unique qualities they possess should be appreciated, accepted, and celebrated. That being said, and to be clear, no efforts shall be made on the part of any educator in a K through five health class to promote, normalize, or encourage any particular lifestyle, or to force students to choose a gender identity, sexual preference, or state-preferred pronouns. All textbooks, lesson plans, and class materials will be carefully crafted and chosen to ensure adherence to the same. Any student-generated questions on these topics that can go beyond the scope of the curriculum will be answered by the teacher in a developmentally appropriate fashion while adhering to the previously stated regulation."
I need a lawyer.
I like to write. But I hope you see that we're really not that different, but mine is, I'm trying to nuance.
I don't wanna throw a lightning rod into this, I see these two things as being common.
Really?
I think, and this is my perspective, I think what Phil is saying is that, until sixth grade, in the curriculum itself, things won't happen, I think, and respectfully.
Yeah, that's fair.
I think what you're saying is, to me, it's going to an extreme where I could almost put in there, like Julia said, you know, the color of skin. You know, people are people, it doesn't matter to me if they're, what orientation they are, what they identify as, it's a student in a classroom. And it, to me, it's, I don't know why we need to do that. It's, you have a student, right? A student says, "I'm a boy," okay. A student says, "I'm a girl," okay. A student says, "I'm binary," whatever, okay. And if there's other students in that, in that class that need to understand what that means, in that setting, then one of two things can happen. This teacher is either equipped to explain it to them or not, or, for the people who say, "I will teach my kid this," a phone call can be made to a parent to say, "Here's the situation. Your child is going to be in a classroom with someone that they may not understand what this child is going through, and we need you to explain it to them." And because this is, this is a societal issue that people are becoming a lot more comfortable with. You know, put the TV on, you know, look at social media, look anywhere in society. The sexualization of society is a real thing. We don't have to like it, but it's real. And it's, it's not something that I think we can, you know, dismiss in a policy or in a statement. It's, I completely, and I'm sorry to go along, I completely respect a parent saying, "I wanna teach my child this." I think the school's responsibility is to alert the parent when it's probably gonna be a good time to have that conversation, because I think it's gonna be getting younger and younger and younger. And, and look, we all have to be okay with that unless we're not. And that's, that's a personal choice, and I'm not gonna tell anybody how to think. But my position on this is to a district of people who are of all different types with feelings, right? Not to a person and their poor beliefs as an individual, but what's in the best interest of the community, which I think is trending in the direction of acceptance.
So, you don't think that's what he said?
Not at all. And again, it's an opinion.
Yeah, I mean, if that, if that's how you, if that's what you take from it, then I gotta rewrite.
Right, right, right.
You know, and that's, and that's the beauty of these conversations, right? Because that, you know, my words, like, accepted, appreciated, and celebrated are in the middle, right? So, good point.
Yeah, I mean, it's a thing, like, accepted, but yeah, that should be, that should be, that shouldn't even have to be said, right?
I feel like more and more parents feel almost disconnected because there's the school to be told, you can't tell, you can't tell anything.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
And I mean, like, no parent wants to send their kids... I mean, I'm just saying, like, no parent wants to send their kids to school, and then there's stuff going behind closed doors. I mean, people, the parents want the school to be open to them. And when we're starting closed doors, and that we're gonna be moving over this education, I mean, it makes people hesitant to wanna send up their kids here.
Yeah, I feel, currently at the moment, but I believe they have, alright, parents have the option to opt out of the sex education.
They have the option to opt out of, they have, like I said before, the standards are the standards. They can opt out of some aspects, but they, it's a little, it's nuanced, I'm sorry. They can opt out of being present in the classroom that day.
So, they would have to be told that, like, it's a particular subject that's going to be taught, or...
Yeah.
And what, do we do that now?
We do, we do it for a variety of different things. Like, if we're going to show a movie, for instance, that is...
Or, or in it are.
That some might disagree with, you send out a letter home, and students can opt out of it, but they, they're not, what I mean to say is, they're still given an assignment to complete, you know? So, it's, you, I guess maybe I'm just defining opt-out. You, if you're in the class, you can say, "My parents are opting me out," and then you can go to the playground. You have to be given another academic thing that's gonna teach you something in that subject.
You know?
I have a question, we start, so, to Phil's policy here, specifically to curriculum, we currently start sex ed in fourth grade?
No, it's starting in kindergarten.
No, we haven't.
Now, what, where does it start now?
If you look at the curriculum, the same statement in curriculum in kindergarten, it's exactly the same as it is in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, Mr. President. Now, don't get me wrong, it's a...
This point of where, would the Board of Education consider limiting any further discussion on this in light of the fact that there are so many disparate divisions, each one needing to be heard, which is really taking up a lot of period of time.
It's a fair point.
I think we're actually closer than...
You guys.
I have a question, I'm gonna, I promise that.
Right, at this moment in time, yeah.
Alright, so, we're on a, Jerry's making a good point, we're on a short leash here, so we'll see where...
He's the G and she's the E, so, that's what it is.
So, my question is, this would change the current situation to, there would be no discussion of sexual education until sixth grade? That would change what we're doing now? And how would that be implemented, would that be effective?
There'll be no, whoa, whoa, that's not true. We will have some level of sexual, sex education, because it says you can talk about male or female, okay? So, you will have that, it's just, it's just...
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Hold on a minute. Alright, we're gonna say, hey, do we wanna continue this or not?
Yeah.
Just raise your hand if you're in favor of continuing with this item, yes. Alright, we're moving on, so...
No, no one agrees with anything in this.
It doesn't mean that we don't agree, it means that we're not gonna keep laboring on it right now. And we'll come back to it in another meeting.
Can we say we will talk about this at the SAC committee?
Yeah, but I hope to get something...
We're gonna talk about it at some...
It's a first draft, I just hope to get it done, so it can be done by May.
Yeah, it's not happening tonight, sorry. Alright, long-term strategic planning.
I tried, I tried, but I failed.
Alright, long-term strategic planning and board goals. I wanna just put one starting point on this. We will do a board goals meeting in August. What I'm hoping tonight's discussion would be about, and we can take this in any direction that you guys wanna take it in, is to just start talking about where we are, what we wanna do, and then really getting into how we did, Jerry made a good point to me the other day, how did we do in terms of achieving the goals that we set for this year? So, that would be, at the end of this year, we'd look at those goals and say, hey, did we achieve them? And then, going into August, starting, you know, new board goals in a meeting. So, this one may or may not take a long time to consider, but, you know, thoughts on this, and Joe?
I promise you, this will...
Sure.
No pressure.
Well, I also know Phil...
Actually, you wanna go first?
No, no, I can't, because I need a...
We could talk through it.
First, I'm happy, okay? I expected to be able to present it with a projector.
This wasn't by design, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I get that, but that's my, that was my expectation. I guess in the other room, we could have done it.
Yeah, there we can. Alright, we can set a meeting for you to do that presentation, I'd like to see it, I think it's good. Phil made a great presentation, he wants to present it to everybody, maybe we can put that into the agenda for the next...
But, let me, let's talk about some of it. I'll just talk about, I'll talk a little bit about it. This is in preparation for doing, not just long-range planning, but just planning in general. I learned in business school and other places that when one makes plans, you are, there are certain things you should do. First thing you would do is to identify, is to create a vision statement. What is your ultimate vision for where you wanna go with whatever it is you're planning? Second thing, which should follow on to the vision statement, is what are your goals to achieve that vision? Now, the Board of Education is responsible for setting the goals for the district. After you've created goals, it's at that point in time that you create specific objectives to try to fulfill each one of those goals to some extent. So, there should be a direct correlation between a number of objections, I said, a number of objectives to a specific goal. So, it's a hierarchy. After objectives, there are tasks. From tasks, you figure out what resources you need, what personnel's required, all kinds of good things. That's where your planning comes in, so, and that's where also you start doing project management. So, the presentation that I have basically discusses all of those issues. I need to make some suggestions on how to go about doing that. That's my verbal explanation, hopefully you understood this.
I'm gonna kinda tie this together, so, what we did was, we developed an ad hoc committee, I mean, I guess I'm talking about this, right? We have the ad hoc committee, and we started to pick some of those, some of those boxes. So, Joe's gonna take over for me, but what I'd like to do is, as you give your presentation at a future meeting, maybe we can tie in what the committee did, and so, like, we have a vision statement, right? That's there, we all talked about that. And we can tie in what we've done versus what Phil's thing says, so we can see how far we've come on that, and then ultimately, fill in the gaps.
Yeah, so, I have heard Phil's presentation, so I know a lot of what he discussed, but to tie it into what Scott was just saying, we did have an ad hoc committee that met for most of last year for the purposes of long-term strategic planning, that was presented to the board and presented in public in August, when we set our goals. Jerry was present at that meeting, and I know you participated well in that meeting, even though you weren't on the board. So, I know that, that most of, I think all of us have seen that. So, that ad hoc committee, in that committee meeting, we came up with a mission, vision statement. We started that as, using that as the first step, because before you talk about, and Phil will tell you about this too, before you create goals and objectives, you have to figure out who it is, what it is that we are as a district, right? What do we believe in? And so, our vision statement was, "OpacCon empowers students to blaze their own trail through trust, tenacity, and teamwork." That was the vision statement. I like alliteration. The mission statement was, "OpacCon provides a thorough and efficient education which focuses on the whole child and builds upon the unique talents and interests of each student. We expect excellence from our entire faculty and staff as we prepare our students to compete at the highest level in the classroom, on the field, on the stage, and in their pursuits after graduation. We understand our roles as partners with parents in educating children and commit to working with the community to provide added value and pride to all those who call OpacCon home." So, hopefully, when you hear those things, you can, you can see that we are really interested in your feedback in creating goals and further objectives that reach those. We came up with a portal learner, I can tell you more about those things in there. But, last thing I'll just share is, we came up with a four-year look at the budget, and looking at what we would need to do. And at that time, we presented a 2% tax increase for four years. And we felt that if we had a 2% tax increase for four years, that would get us, that would get us to a place that we could be more financially stable. That's what we discussed. Now, that's not what, the board didn't like that at all at the time. They didn't too much, I think.
Yes.
And so, but I just want, I share that with you to show that these conversations have been presented, and I know that that four, four years at 2% was the suggestion that came out of the ad hoc committee. What we need to talk about in terms of long-term strategic planning tonight is, how are we going to provide a thorough and efficient education for all of our students moving forward? Now, it'll bounce us around a little bit, because I know one of the things we'll talk about is income ideas and some of these things. So, Phil, you were trying to jump in, so go ahead.
Your mission statement that you provided last year, I thought was a great effort, but I think it's really a little bit short of, where it's too, to me, it's just too nebulous.
Okay, alright.
Me, I'm concerned about the reputation of OpacCon schools, and the reputation is, for the most part, based upon where it ranks, okay, in the hierarchy of schools within the state. Currently, we're at a 599 districts. Ours is more of this really, well, it's close to the box, very close to the box. I wouldn't want the vision statement to say that the vision is to elevate the school system so that we're in the top 100. That's a, that's a very clear, concise vision that everyone can understand, and everyone can row toward it, whereas the vision statement you suggested is again to be, is a little bit too nebulous. Just to say that's my point.
Well, if I could push back on it just a little bit. I don't think it's nebulous, and here's why. I believe that once upon a time, people saw the success of a high school and its school district as, how many students go to four-year college, for instance? How many students do well on AP tests, as an example? I believe that we've, we've changed in the way we view success, and we see that there's just as much value as a, can I just finish the thought? That there's just as much value in a student, for instance, that goes through our cosmetology program, gets a cert, an industry cert, can go right into the field of work and earn an income. Basically, in short, that a student can take their talents and interests and leverage them into a prosperous career. And so, that's how I viewed it with our community, and I think that's been reflective in a lot of the programs we have.
Okay, cool. Yeah, but that's not actually how it's done, unfortunately.
What do you mean by that?
Well, what I mean by that is that the schools are ranked based upon several criteria, okay? How good a sports program you've got, you know, what are the, how experienced are the teacher?
Where they, where they graduate, where they go to a four-year college, and what their AP score is, is one of the factors, that's why...
But what's the high... Okay, but what's the highest one? 60% of the grade to where you are that technical where is academics. 60%.
Right.
And everything else falls below it. So those, you know, academics are more important than anything else.
To, to whom?
No, to the people doing the, doing the school.
Understood, but to whom in terms of, for example, if we want, if we have a really good special ed program, we would be attracted to families with special ed students. And they might come here regardless of what our score is in the top 100. If we have a cosmetology program, there might be families that say, I'm attracted to sending my child to Opac.
You have a very different vision than what I'm suggesting, that's all, that's what we're saying. Which is okay, which is okay.
I agree, because the ma, matter is, we can't offer as many AP classes. We can't offer as many, we can offer the basics and we can offer some elective, but talking about class size, if we wanted to offer all of the things that someone else does, we're gonna have two and three kids in the class, we're not way more teachers than we need. You have to find that balance.
That is definitely part of the criteria.
Right, so I think that I would love, I would love to increase our test scores, right? Right, but I don't think we can ever say that we'll be in the top 100 if the criteria is, you know, how many, how many kids are taking an AP class and sitting in that room and then testing for it? Okay, but when you say academics, what do you mean?
It's really the scores, the grades.
But their grades or their test scores?
Their test scores.
Right, because they're great.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. I don't recall that, but I'm pretty sure it's the test scores.
Right, so we can put emphasis on, you know, teaching, you know, skills that are going to be used when they're, you know, in classrooms and taking the test. But I think if, I, I think because of what, I think we have people here or just not.
Jerry's got his hand, and then Jed.
Yep. Sorry, Jerry.
I think that, I think that, um, success, educational success, can be expressed and measured in many different ways, not just academic success. And I think for the state to apply that broad standard of academic success discriminates against certain districts with certain populations, ours to being one of them. So my suggestion, I see absolutely nothing wrong with a youngster going through a vocational education program, becoming a licensed electrician and making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I consider that to be a success. So I, I think what I would like to see is that we forget about state standards. Not because I don't like the state, which I don't, but we, the, the standards that we use should be standards appropriate to measure the progress that we are able to make with the student population that we have.
Jed.
I know the same lines. Not everybody is geared to go to college. For many years, everyone had, you know, had college shut down in their throat, and you have to go to college or you're not a success. That's not true. Many people want to do a successful military career. Many people want to go and do what Jerry said, uh, social group occupation, like, I don't know, electrician, uh, heating and air conditioning. That, that, just, you know, they don't go to college just not being, they're not successful.
Of course not, of course not. Uh, by the way, 74, I think I said this in the last meeting, 74% of our students actually graduate, go to college, right? It's a high, very high percentage.
We don't know the direction.
No, we don't know.
We don't know.
No, that's what it's saying.
So I, I, I think the question, the question is, I'm gonna tie it back to, to long-term strategic planning, right? So I, I, I think good points by everybody. So in, as we build a long-term strategic plan, uh, I mean, I don't have an answer for this, but this is what we have to get to, is how do we factor in all of the different elements, right? How do we build a strategic plan and develop goals and implementation and follow-up based around the fact that we, we will have students that go to college, and we will have students that do vocation, and we will have students that do music, right? So how, this is what we're tasked with right now, is to, is to advance this, this forward in terms of how we bring all that together and actually have a plan to, to make it happen. And, and I think, I'll just say one other thing on it. I think, uh, tie it back to the beginning, public relations, right? We need to advertise what we do well. The cosmetology is a great example. If we get that message out there more, uh, that could be attractive to a family that says, hey, I'm looking to move. Where am I gonna go? I'm gonna go to Opaccon for this cosmetology program. And we can think of other programs and other cool things like that.
I love this website, we have not released it yet, and we have to update it. But I love the op-ed letter and I love the website because those are the thing, those are the facts. Those are the things that you all are looking for when you hear the, the rumors, you don't know if it's true. Like, I like that you can go here and you can see it in print, so I would like to.
When Nicole's talking, I'm sorry. What Nicole's talking about is when the ad hoc committee presented in August, I just created like a silly Google, uh, classroom, Google, Google site.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, we could update it now with some more information, and we could just put that up on our website so you could see what was already presented.
I think it's just a good source of information to get real.
Anybody else on this?
No, I think, I think that was, I think that was very well quoted.
We did have senior citizens at the high school today getting their hair cut by the cosmetology folks. So I, I'll just mention that since it came up.
How about your military being one example?
Okay, if, if anybody has anything else on that, otherwise we're gonna move to reconfiguration. Alright, so I, reconfiguration.
Okay, reconfiguration ties to, I, uh, Mr. Shindalar, you had asked me last, at the meeting on Monday, and I really didn't get a chance to respond to you, um, but consider this a, a response. So, um, Mr. Shindalar had asked, hey, what's the update on the consolidation efforts? And, um, how that might play into reconfiguration? I did explain some of this previously, so I apologize for the, what might be redundant to some. There was a bill, or there is a bill, with an opportunity to participate in a grant that would allow the, uh, would allow New Jersey to study two districts that participate. So, for instance, if I find another district, let's call that district Jefferson, as a hypothetical. If I got Jefferson to agree, we both would enter an application. If we're accepted, the, the state of New Jersey, would it, would do a study where they would see, are there benefits if those districts consolidate? How much money would they save? What shared services would be effectuated? Would it help? It's based on a Salem County study where 17 school districts did this study, and it was determined that they would save millions of dollars for the taxpayer and would improve the education by all 17 in the county consolidating. Long story short, I have reached out to many, many, many districts. Nobody wants to, to participate with us. So I'll say it into the camera in case anybody's watching. Call me, email me, if you're watching from another district, if you're interested in joining us on, on this effort. The count, no one in the county wants to participate, and our neighbors in, um, outside the county don't, aren't interested in participating. Now, some of you might say, why wouldn't you, why would you participate and why wouldn't you? The reason you would is obvious because if there's ways to improve our education at a lower cost to the taxpayer, who wouldn't want to do that? The other reason would be, part of the deal was if you got accepted, they would cover the costs of the study, the state, and they would extend your state aid cuts over a longer period of time. However, in the fine print of this document, this was all in the bill, in the fine print of the document, it says, we, we may refund up to 100% of your study costs, which may gave, gave a lot of districts the heebie-jeebies that the state really wouldn't refund them totally. And people that are desperate to join this aren't in a position to maybe be on the hook for costs. The other piece is, yes, they'll extend your cuts, but only if at the end of the study, both districts move forward with what is being recommended by the study. So again, hypothetical, let's say Jefferson joins us, and I'm sorry, Jefferson, I get mentioned. Let's say Jefferson joins us, we're both really committed, and in the end, the study suggests that we totally consolidate. Totally consolidating Brian Will tested us would mean that we'd all have to agree to the same contract for our teachers, and it would go to the highest contract if you consolidate. So the highest collective bargaining agreement would be the one the other town would have to consolidate, uh, agree to. So let's say ours is higher than Jefferson's, I don't know. Jefferson's town would have to agree to that consolidation to pay the teachers our rate. So in the end, even if both Board of Ed, Boards of Ed want to agree to this, but their townsfolk don't, that will go down, and then someone will, someone might say, well, that's okay, at least you got your, your state aid extended, and at least you know. No, that's not, that's not the end of it. Then you'd have to pay back what you didn't pay. So basically, you just deferred payment. And then you'd be on the hook for all the costs of the, of the study. So I, I asked, I met with the county, and I got all this information from meeting with the county, um, business administrator and meeting with our attorneys. And I said to our county business administrator, uh, two days ago, I said, why would anyone do this then? Like, what the heck? Do they want us to do this? We want to do this. I found out Salem County did it all through their, um, their county college and through their, um, county, what's the word? No, county, uh, yeah, I was just avoiding saying that word. Commissioner, I was gonna use the old term, the county commissioner. So I reached out to the, to our county commissioner, hoping to do it. I haven't gotten a response back whether he would be interested in doing it. So that's the whole situation. Does that mean that we're done entering crazy ideas with other districts for shared services? We are not. I was on the phone yesterday with multiple superintendents in our county trying to come up with crazy ideas, the best way I could put it, to try to give us a better education at a lower cost. Now, to the point on Tulsa, one of the things we have to look at is a reconfiguration. Not because we think it's the best idea off the bat, but because if we know that we can do the same in four school, uh, in three schools that we can do in four, it's in our best interest to check that out. And so that gives us the, kind of the main positioning of this conversation. Jerry?
I was with the president of the Lafayette Board of Education yesterday. And I think that he might, he might very well be amenable to partnering with us. So I would suggest, his name is Josh Aikens, A-I-K-E-N-S. And, and he'll, he'll remember the way that I threatened him. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that you will get a, a pretty good response.
If you forget.
Lafayette.
Does it matter if you're K through 12 or K through 18? Because I know that, it doesn't matter? No, that's awesome, that's why I'm asking, because I know that they're, they're probably still elementary, secondary, and they're gonna walk. But if that doesn't matter, then go for it.
Any questions on, or comments on reconfiguration?
I just want to say that when the idea to close Hudson was floated, I lost my mind, right down the street from me, that's where I went to school, I walk by it every day. But Hudson is now closed. It sounds like a wonderful facility is going to be put there, and our kids are still being educated, um, and they're still in town, and we saved some money. So from someone who was not into the idea at all when it first happened, I've come around to it, I think it was in the vast interest of our school. And I think we do need to look at Tulsa because of the mold issue that it had, because of the, um, quality or the, of the, of the roof. Nine hundred thousand dollars, I think it was gonna cost to fix it, right? And, you know, we lost 10 teachers this year. How much, how many teachers would we be able to pay for nine hundred thousand dollars? These are all things that we have to weigh.
Anybody else on this?
Yes. Jackson?
Run.
I'm still there.
I'm gonna have some questions too, you're going.
So, do we lose the Makerspace room?
Is that that?
Do we still use the Makerspace room that was put there?
I don't, I don't believe that Makerspace is being fully used, but I, I would love to.
I mean, it sounds like, I'm pretty lucky. The, the Makerspace, I just wanted to, I just wanted to know how we use it. Says, Makerspace is now the OT and speech room? And that was, that Makerspace was fully granted, I'm just reading some, some of the things. Some of their sharing rooms, their sharing space, it's really specialist and losing a room.
With union leadership and with Mr. Byrne to, to come up with creative ideas to use.
Did I make a suggestion? On that note, the reason we're here is to come up with good ideas. I would suggest maybe do that with all the schools, in all the schools. And, you know, and then we can come back to a reconfiguration discussion with data of how we're using the space currently and talk through with recommendations from principals, how we might wanna.
I don't bend a twist going forward.
Well, I think one thing we know about data, about data is, many of you here looking at me have been in the community for a while, and you've had kids go through the schools. And you remember when the high school had a lot more people in the school. So, anyone that suggests to you, and this is not me saying we need to do anything, this is just stating plainly fact, so please just take it for what it is. You know that more people can fit in this building. You also know that, that if you have kids at the middle school, there are rooms in the middle school that are available. So I'm talking about, there, there are, there are spaces that are available. So when we talk about reconfiguration, if somebody said, uh, somebody, somewhere, somebody somewhere will make a good point and say, well, what happens if we grow? And that's a good point, that's a good point. And so one of the things that I think we need to discuss is, if ever we close, propose to close a building, a good idea would be to consider either leasing it or consider having some sort of presence from our district there so that it doesn't get pulled off the, the books as a school. Because once a building, zoning people will know this, once the building leaves school designation and we want to reopen it, even if we own it, we gotta bring it back up to new code, it's gonna be very cost prohibitive. Um, so anyway, one of the things I would like to know is, just so, just so we can move forward in it is, does, does the board support, um, the concept of renting out those Tulsa rooms next year, those three rooms?
I, I think we should, and I personally should be supplanting for those rooms, so like, with a roof fix. I mean, suddenly get a loan and then use whatever we're getting for those, those rooms, eight for the roof. You can't put pre-coated in there with a roof.
Well, there's two, there's an answer to this too that I think we, so that, the two points. You're bringing up the roof again, and that's important, because if we plan to stay there long-term, we gotta invest all the money for it. If we plan to stay there for another year, another two years, well then, and you won't know this because you own homes, right? You own cars. Do you, do you, you reach a point with your car where you say, do I replace the transmission or do I get a new car? You know, do I, do I invest money for a new set of tires if I'm gonna get a new car next week? Well, no, you, you don't. So it, there's no question that leaks should not be allowed. There's no question that a roof should not be blowing in the wind. But the question is, should we spend a million dollars to replace the roof if we're, if we feel, the board feels, that you're only gonna be in that building for another year, two years, three years?
I don't see that we're gonna be staying there for a year or two, especially if we have a school program. We're gonna be growing a lot, and I, I think it's also gonna attract people to move to our town that we can off, you know, offset a cost that is extremely hard on handling.
I, I'd like to understand more, like, what's going on over there? Is, is water coming through the roof? Is water coming through the roof in the middle of the day? Yeah, so if, right, so. So we're coming to a point here where we're going to make a decision, probably right now, around whether or not to fix this roof and whether or not to use building. Unless we're getting out of the, and this is an opinion, unless we're getting out of this building effective immediately, I'm going to vote to fix it. That's going to be me, right? And so we'll come to a.
When you say fix it, you mean just fix it?
Well, there's two ways to fix it, right? And that's going to be a discussion. Jerry.
I think there are a lot of complicated factors involved with a decision like that. So I would request that Board of Education consider postponing any decision to be made tonight until we get more information on the cost of the roof repair, classrooms that are going to be used, the reconfiguration, et cetera, et cetera. Now, if we can put a band-aid on the roof temporarily, relieve the leaking, I would recommend that because some of the decisions that we could make in case might be irreversible. And if that's the case, then we're stuck. So I'm asking for a postponement of any serious consideration or any motion this evening to do anything specifically until we've had, until we've received more information. And that could very well be the result of hiring an architect, engineer, go through the building and to identify what needs to be done and the costs associated with that. So at that point, we could make what I think would be, you know, a reasonable cost-benefit analysis. Thank you.
I have a question for Jeff, and then I think I have a motion on the heels of the answer. Is the building, are we able to fix the roof? Forget that we're going to stay there for 20 years. I don't want water coming into the building when there's kids in there. If we patch it, do we have to get an architect to come in? Or are we equipped to do that right now on our own?
So the Finance Committee, twice over the last nine months, has been provided with costs, drawings, and takeoffs for what it would take to replace the roof with a 20-year warranty group on that building. Now, as a result of the conversations that you are having becomes the cost-benefit analysis, right? Where you need to make a decision of, are we going to invest $900,000, it's about $852,000, in a 20-year warranty group? Or are we going to attempt to repair and patch it? We have had multiple patches on that roof this year. One of the issues centers around a drain stack on that roof that has to be completely replaced regardless of what you do. It is a cast iron drain set that continues to leak. It is a truss roof. So that has to be replaced regardless. The cost is almost $30,000 just for that, plus additional patching repairs. The roof during one of our windy days, because it hasn't been windy at all in the last six, eight months here, delaminated, meaning you have insulation that has a paper-based barrier on it over which the rubber membrane is attached. Wind has gotten between the membrane and the insulation, and it pulled the paper barrier in spots off of that insulation. So no water is leaking as a result of the delamination. Water is leaking as a result of faulty seams in that roof that need to continually be patched and repaired. We will have yet another, if it's the board's wish, another company come out and look to identify areas where additional patches need to be done. We continue to do that on almost a monthly basis. What you have to understand is, the roof on that school is original to that school. So just like your homes, right? Newer roofs on your homes have 30, 35, 40, even 50-year warranties. That roof was put on that building in the 80s. You're at 40 years on that roof, roughly, all right? Certain areas of that building were added on, so those roofs are newer. But that's the same issue you have with a number of your facilities, is the age of them.
Thanks. With Jen and Jerry then Phil.
All right. I think as we were discussing before, we don't want to give up the building because we can't bring it back to school. It'll cost more money to bring it all up the road. But I think in our best bet, fix the roof. Whether we choose to lease out more rooms, whether we choose to do it, hopefully to bring a preschool in, it's going to grow and you're bringing it all back. Yeah, for whatever reason, 10 years down the line, we decide that we want to sell. Having a brand-new roof will increase the value of the building because if it collapses, we need concrete, a lot more problems. Anyhow, if we get a horrible free feet snow this coming winter, if it's not fixed by then, then we have to worry about the roof caving in. And it's a safety issue.
Jerry.
I'm in favor of a short-term graduated approach with a time limit that will force the board to make the decisions that need to be made. Once those decisions are made, we could then go forward and make a decision whether or not to invest $800,000 or $900,000 on a permanent roof. I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm just suggesting a little bit of an adjustment in the timing.
Right, Phil. The question we have to ask and answer, as soon as possible, do we intend to keep the building? That's really the question you have to answer. And if the answer is yes, then figure out how to get the money to replace the roof. Yep, the answer is no, then you have to ask the question, well, how often is the roof going to leak even with the patches? From what I gather, we've been doing the patches all along, and yet it still leaks. Though the patches don't seem to be doing the job that we expect. And is there, do we have to get better patches? Or do we need a different?
No, I think what you see is that, like anything else, when you patch one area, another area opens up. Some of the patches do in fact fail, because it's like anything else. If the substrate isn't in a good condition that you have to put a patch over, it isn't going to hold forever. It's like patching a tire on your car. If the hole is too big and you plug it, it'll last for a while, but it's not going to last forever.
Someone mentioned before, and they said that the roof is not going to leak.
Yes, that's what's a result of delamination.
I think we're wasting our money.
Yeah, Dana.
Is that where the, like, the water's complete, that you did iron?
Cast iron drain.
Can we vote that that gets fixed at least? That that's where the majority of the leaking is coming from?
That's what I want to ask you. Is that where the majority of the leak is coming from?
No, it's happening, and if you look in that building, there are multiple areas, the length of that hallway.
All right, we're good. I'm going to make a motion that we fix the roof, right? And if I get a second, then we vote on it.
I'll second.
Whoa, whoa, you got to ask.
I'm going to, okay, okay. My motion is, we have this money in the capital reserves to fix the entire thing. Jeff, the 852, we have as well.
Well, I need to understand specifically where you are asking for this funding to come from. Here's where I say this, because it's very, very important. You have a capital reserve fund that has $991,000 in it. That requires plans submitted to the Department of Education. That requires building plans from the town. It requires approval from the Office of School Facilities. And then you either need to go out to bid or you need to use a cooperative contract to be able to do those services, right? You have, as a result of COVID, a state law that allows you to take your general surplus from 2% to 4%. The district is required to draw down that really additional 2% by June 30th of 2023. That is approximately $660,000. So when you make your motion, whatever it might be, you need to delineate the specific funding source that you are looking to utilize to pay for these costs.
Okay, that's not my area of expertise, but.
Just a quick question. Should we first make a decision of whether or not we want to keep this roof?
Right, yeah.
Well, yes, but I have, here's my position. We have students going into this school every day with water dripping out of it. And in my opinion, that needs to be fixed right away. And even if we decide later on to sell the school. Yes, because if we sell it and it's got a new roof on it, it's going to be worth it.
I'm not, I'm not.
Right, and listen.
It will not be worth it.
Exactly. Jerry, go ahead.
God.
I'm going to stay.
I was responsible for 31 million square feet of roofs from the Bisco. Can I get up and talk?
I beg your pardon. I'm sorry, I'm order.
I can't let you.
Can I offer my services to you?
I can't let you.
Not yet.
Right.
Give us time.
You're afraid.
Wait.
No, I don't need to. You're up.
I just think from a common sense point of view, I want the board to have the best information possible to make the best decision before we commit to spending that kind of money on a building that we may eventually decide not to keep. So I'm certainly not against fixing the roof. What I am against is the board committing to an expenditure unless and until what I think should come first, and that is figuring out as quickly as possible what we're going to do with that building.
All right, I'm making a motion that we're going to vote on whether or not we're going to keep this building long-term. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, we're in this.